I didn't understand.
Healing nicely. Hate to think what the other guy looks like. Okay, here we go, everyone. Welcome to the North Flat City Council meeting. Here on Tuesday, November nineteenth, twenty twenty four at five thirty P M. Of course, we're here in the city council chambers. Calling the meeting to order. We have an invocation by Pastor Daniel Ramsey from our Redeemer Lutheran Church, please.
Let us pray. In the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. Lord God, heavenly Father, as the psalmist declares, oh, give thanks to the Lord, for he is good, for his steadfast love endures forever. On this week before the Thanksgiving holiday, we pray, help us to remember that all that we are and all that we have are gifts from you, which we receive from you, not because we deserve them or earn them, but simply out of your steadfast love for us. You sustain us from day to day with the gifts of daily bread in the food that we eat, the families that surround us, the friends we enjoy, the jobs and careers that we have, the country that we live in, and countless other benefits that we receive from your open hand. We pray deepen us in the knowledge of your goodness and awaken our hearts to praise you for all your gifts, especially the forgiveness of sins that you purchased and won for us and the whole world in the atoning sacrifice, the death and resurrection of your son, Jesus Christ. As the city commission gathers this evening to take care of the business of addressing the needs and administering the gifts that you bestow on our city, grant them wisdom that they may discern the best courses of action in all that they do. Grant them peace that they may address one another and the petitioners here present in gentleness of spirit. And guide them by your Holy Spirit that they may follow the true purposes of government, namely to safeguard peace and prosperity, so that we may live good and upright lives in your sight and have opportunity to tell of you and your steadfast love for us. Through Jesus Christ, our Lord, we pray this. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Roll call, please, Angie.
Here.
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 Thank you. A current copy of the Open Meetings Act of St. Louis, Nebraska is posted on the wall at the back of the council chambers. Meeting procedure, the public may address specific agenda items at the pleasure of the mayor. If recognized by the mayor, please identify yourself by stating your name and address. Please address the council through the mayor and limit your remarks. We respect our city employees and request that any complaints or criticisms of employees not be aired in a public meeting. Concerns about employees should be brought to the attention of the city administrator or the mayor. Individuals in violation will be declared out of order. Consent agenda. All matters on the consent agenda are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Any city council member may, however, remove an item from consent by request. Number one, A, approve the minutes of November five, twenty twenty four. B, place on file the treasurer's report for September twenty twenty four. C, approve the application by North Flat J C's for a special designated license on December nineteenth, twenty twenty four, from seven thirty P M to ten thirty P M at Pizza Ranch two oh one East Sixth Street for Ladies Night Downtown. D, approve the mayor's appointment of Lauren Scher to the North Flat Library Advisory Board. E, approve the license agreement for the use of real property with Mid Plains Community College area and authorize the mayor to sign any necessary documents.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Second.
Motion by Rieker, second by Nisley. Calling the question on the consent agenda, please. Consent agenda is passed. Moving on to the regular agenda, item number two. Adopt the resolution offering the offering the Golden Spike Tower and Visitor Center the opportunity to borrow funds in order to repay the United States Department of Agriculture.
I move to adopt the resolution offering the Golden Spike Tower and Visitor Center to the opportunity to borrow funds in order to repay the United States Department of Agriculture.
Second. Motion by Garrick, second by, I think Rieker won that one. Sorry, time. Okay, anyway. Okay, I have a presentation on this item and then we'll kind of talk through it from there. Judy, would you, or Judy, Angie, sorry. I'm used to calling it Judy when there's a question on this stuff. Okay. A while back in analyzing what we should do with the city budget and various opportunities to improve our community, one of the things that we've looked at is, is how do we improve what I might call the sports tourism infrastructure of the community. And there's lots of things that fall into that. This council undertook doing one of the very first things in that line when we decided to build, rebuild pickleball and tennis courts in Cody Park. That was kind of a first step and something in that category. And as we look at doing other things, one of the things I want to move towards next is redoing or figuring out how to improve softball and baseball infrastructures, specifically things like Billwood Field. And also the girls' softball diamonds. And there's other improvements we can make on over on Centennial Park where the boys' diamonds. But there is a whole list of things here. I'll just show it rather than read it. That that the community is either working on or could be working on with the idea that as we, as we bring more people to town for, in this example, baseball and softball tournaments. It helps our local businesses. It adds to the sales tax, which we use to decrease property tax. It also, in many cases, adds to the occupation tax, which helps other things, as you'll see this plan unfold. The other thing is that we wanted to be proactive in changing this, the use of the city occupation tax with the spike. And I'll unfold this a little bit as I talk more, but if you look forward to the February seventeenth, twenty twenty nine, the revenue that the spike, that the Golden Spike now receives would end according to the existing ordinance, and that money would then come into the city's general fund. We also wanted to figure out how to accomplish both these things without doing any changes or increases or adding any sort of new taxes, which, of course, we'll see we have achieved in this. Before I go any further, I just want to talk a little bit about what exists today. And in short, there is, and I'm describing this fairly quickly, and we'll be happy to take questions towards the end, but there is an option agreement that exists between the Golden Spike Board and the city of North Platte. And this is just a small piece of that option agreement, but it contains several relevant paragraphs. The first one shows you, the paragraph labeled B above shows you that the the loan that the spike has with the USDA, which is what the occupation tax is dedicated to pay for, that and operations of the spike is currently those revenues are dedicated to that activity until February seventeenth, twenty twenty nine. Okay, keep that, that date is relevant, so keep that in mind. The paragraph on this picture that's, that's labeled two indicates that if the city exercises the option to own the spike at the end of that February seventeenth, twenty twenty nine period, or when the USDA loan is paid off, the sale price for that option, it's a property option, would be the amount of money, the amount of tax money, occupation tax money that was paid for the spike over the last approximately twenty-two years, if, if we wait until February seventeenth, twenty twenty nine. Paragraph C there is the exercise of option, and that basically just says that the city has the, the option to exercise its option. Keep me honest here, Mr. City Attorney. For one year after that February seventeenth, twenty twenty nine, or one year after the USDA loan is paid off. So that's just a little bit of information on where we stand today. I'll bring this all together here shortly. This is, this is complete coincidence, and I apologize for the relatively small print, but you'll notice that this document was originally signed on eleven eighteen two thousand and four. So we're almost to the day, twenty years later, discussing what we're going to do about the revenues associated with the spike. I just thought it was a little lighthearted and a little bit of irony to show this, so. Now we look at what is the existing ordinance, and again, I apologize for the small print, but if, if you look at the yellow highlighted area, what it says is, and it, and with this entire paragraph, the only part of it that's relevant to the spike is this yellow highlighted section. And that becomes important here in a second, too, but it says revenue collected on hotel accommodations shall be used by the city to assist the city in constructing and operating a visitor's center promoting the city's railroad heritage until twelve A M midnight, February seventeenth, twenty twenty nine, after which time the same shall be deposited into the general fund of the city. Okay, that's relevant to this occupation tax. The rest of that paragraph, it talks about other things. It is at ten, let's see, one ten zero three in the city statutes, if you'd like to look it up and read further, but that's the, that's the existing statute today. It's also relevant to mention that the spike right now, as of today, as things set today, pays twenty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars a month towards their USDA loan, or just under twenty-three thousand dollars. That, that payment is, at this point, largely principal because it's reaching the, the end period of the loan. But the interest rate paid on that loan was four point one two five percent. See up there in the upper left. Okay? The little tiny paragraph at the bottom is a paragraph that comes from the promissory note that the Spike Board signed when this process started. And if my bifocals don't fail me, I'm going to read what it says here. If at any time it shall appear to the government, which in this case is the USDA, that borrower may be able to obtain a loan from a responsible cooperative or private credit source at reasonable rates and terms for loans for similar purposes and periods of time, borrower will, at the government's request, apply for and accept such loan in sufficient amount to repay the government. So in English, what that's saying is, if an entity that is able to, offers to loan the Spike Board the money to repay the USDA, they're required to take the money as long as the terms are similar and appropriate. Okay? That's in the Spike Board's agreement with the USDA. Okay, so that's where we stand today. That is the, the, there's a lot more to the agreements and a little bit more to the promissory note, but those are the important pieces that exist today. What, why are we talking about this? What are we proposing? What's on the council agenda tonight, this item number two that we just, that we just discussed, is, in essence, a resolution that recognizes all of the, the relevant parts in the early part of the resolution. Then we get to the meat of it, which is section one and section two here, which says the city of North Platte is able to provide the Golden Spike Tower and the Visitor Center with a loan at the reasonable rates and terms for loans for similar purposes and periods of time and the amount sufficient to repay the United States Department of Agriculture. And section two says that the mayor is hereby authorized to negotiate the specific terms and conditions of said loan, subject to the final approval of the city council, of course. That is what is before us tonight in the materials, which I'm sure you've all seen. Moving on. Also, in tonight's materials are, is basically a cleanup of the ordinance that we looked at a little earlier. So I'm going to step back here. See that rather hard to read ordinance right there? I mean, it's, there's a lot to that. What our fearless city attorney has done is proposed an ordinance that is well, there's more to it than these three paragraphs, but I'm just doing an example. It is taking those sentences, dividing them into sections, and making it easier to read is, is really what we're doing. As you guys know, we often, when we want to touch large ordinances, we try to make them easier to read for the public, so people can understand what they're about. Okay. That is the end of the presentation. Now let me, let me sum up here a little bit. What, what is being requested the council and the reason why is, is the authority to negotiate with the spike, to work with the Spike Board, and see if we can negotiate terms that are agreeable to all concerned, whereby the city of North Platte would loan the Golden Spike Board the money to pay off the USDA loan. In exchange for doing that, we would extend the term of the loan out to, or what's being suggested right now is twenty years, which would make the monthly spike payment. Of course, we don't know exactly what the payoff dollar figure is precisely, but it would be approximately forty-five hundred dollars per month to the spike. So they would be going from, down from twenty-three thousand to roughly forty-five hundred. In return, what is likely to occur is that the spike would, would agree to a number of things, but two of the most relevant ones would be that they would, we would change the contract and remove the option requirement from the contract. So the city of North Platte would no longer have the automatic option to buy the spike once the USDA loan is off. The reason for that is simply that I don't want the city of North Platte to own the spike. And the Spike Board doesn't want the city of North Platte to own the spike. I don't know that there's anyone that wants the city of North Platte to own the spike. I don't think there probably is. And so by removing that option from the contracts in any associated ordinances, that no longer is an option. Now, some future council, twenty years from now, could do something completely different, but, but there's nothing that we can do about that today. That's always, that's always a possibility. And the other relevant piece is that, uh, what's being proposed is that we, we, the city council, would then pass an ordinance that would reduce the revenue that is going to the spike and what's on, from the occupation tax. And then we would then divert that money to do things like improve the baseball and softball courts or fields. And what's on the table right now and what we have generically discussed with the spike, with most of the members of the Spike Board, is that in the first year of this agreement, we would drop the revenue to the spike down to thirty-five percent of what it's receiving right now. In the next year, it would drop to thirty percent. It would proceed down until it gets to fifteen, which would be a short period of time ending in that February seventeenth, twenty twenty nine. Because that's what the voters approved originally when they approved this ordinance for this occupation tax for the spike. So then after that, the spike would not automatically receive any funds from the city at all, or from the occupation tax at all. Being a nonprofit organization, they could come to the city like Nebraska Land Days and various other things and, and request funds. They, they'd be welcome to do something like that, I would think, at that point, but they wouldn't automatically receive any sort of occupation funds at that point. I know it's a little murky and a little complex, but, but, but that's it in a nutshell. Did I miss anything, Bill?
I don't think so. I mean, that's good overhead picture of, of what's going on there. It's, it's been a lot of work that's been put into this to try to bring it to this point to kind of present to the councils, so. I think that covers.
Okay, so the relevant pieces are what, what the council is before the council tonight is to either agree or disagree with, with giving me the authority to work with the Spike Board to come back with some contracts and some changes that would occur at a later meeting. That's really what the council is approving. They would have to approve all of this before we could do any of it. So a critical step to mention in this, just for everyone's clear understanding, is that the city cannot change anything about the existing ordinance, the existing occupation tax ordinance, until the USDA loan is, is paid off. So we either, we either change it all at once, or we leave it the way it is until twenty twenty nine. It's basically simply what our options are. Okay, what questions? Anyone have? Ed, oh, go ahead.
I think one thing really important to point out that I don't know that was clarified is so the occupation tax, I believe that's not going in to the general fund, so the sixty-five percent and then the seventy percent, that's going into a special fund. Would you, would you delve into that a little bit, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, thank you for that clarification. So the, the, the existing ordinance requires that it goes into the general fund, but our intent is to put it into a help me with the right terminology, Don, sub-fund that would be dedicated to, is that a good? Special revenue fund that would segregate the fund so that they are dedicated to improving those tourist activities. Okay, thank you. Yep. Ed?
Mr. Mayor, so we, we can't change the tax rate until the FDA loan is paid off, correct?
On the rate, I know there are some specific rules around that. I'm gonna let Bill talk about that, so.
Yeah, so if, if you're talking the rate itself, by statute, the rate cannot be changed. It, it depends on whether you're talking up or down, but depending on what direction you're talking, if it's up, then the voters would have to approve any increase in that revenue. If the council would be proposing to lower it, that would not necessarily require a vote, nor would termination of it. But as the existing ordinance reads, it doesn't contemplate getting rid of that. It just says that all those proceeds will go into the general fund after February seventeenth of twenty twenty nine. So hopefully, I don't know if I, hopefully that answers your question.
Well, I, I think you, I think if I understood you correctly, we still cannot monkey with the tax rate until the loan is paid.
That's correct.
Because of the underlying option agreement with the spike where the city has, where twenty years ago, the city pledged those revenues to the spike, so we're contractually obligated to pay them to the spike.
So once that loan is paid, then we, as a council, could in fact maybe reduce the occupation tax to a lower rate than four percent and allocate the remainder of those funds to the special fund that, that the mayor is proposing. Is that, is that correct? After
Just so we're clear.
Loan is paid?
Yes, yes, it could be proposed to change the tax, the occupation tax rate, just so you're clear, it's only two percent.
Oh, it's two percent, not four percent. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. But we would not be able to do that now. That would have to be done after the loan is paid.
Right, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Because the option agreement has to be eliminated in order for all that.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Mr. Woods?
Okay, so when the, when it rolls around the year 29 and they're down to 15%, they have what, like another 15, 16 years left on this new loan? Do they get that 15% through the whole?
No, it goes to zero after, after February 29th, 2029.
Oh, well, that's extremely nice to hear. Kind of changes my mind about this whole thing.
I guess, um, on the original contract, what I understood is that the Spike was getting more than what was owed on the loan and they elected not to prepay the loan. Can you talk to, about that a little bit? I mean, what, why they didn't prepay the loan and what was done with the extra money?
Just the ordinance is up there for reference if you need it.
Well, I, I can't, I can't speak as to, you know, what the, the Spike Board decided to do because they're, they're independent organization and I, you know, that's, that's their decision to make. What I, what I can respond to, I guess, is that, um, from the documents that we've reviewed that the Spike uh, signed with USDA is that they, they were merely just pledging their revenues, whatever the source was, to repay the loan. And, you know, it was kind of up to their discretion as to if they were getting more in occupation tax revenue, uh, as to what they would use those funds for. Under the option agreement, should I pull, pull it out of my file here, but under the option agreement, it, it doesn't say specifically that they have to use all of those funds for repayment of the USDA loan. It, it says that they can use them for operating expenses, different things like that. So again, that's a 20-year-old agreement.
Right, so going forward, will there, will there be above and beyond income to them through this agreement for them to spend on whatever? Or, or, or are they just going to get X number of dollars and it all goes to that loan?
Under the current percentages, of course, it depends on how much revenue comes into the occupation tax in the first place. You know, that, with that number varies. And for the, the sake of discussion, Lane averaged it and I walked off without the numbers, but it's, it's been averaging over the last four years, a little over $500,000 a year. The annual loan payment is, Bruce, do you know the number off the top of your head? It's 276,000 roughly. It's maybe a little more than that, but somewhere in that vicinity. So the difference there would be roughly $230,000, something like that. That was what the overage you're talking. So in, in the new arrangement, if you, if you cut down how much money would be coming in, if you just assume for easy calculation, that it's 35% in the first year. So they would get $175,000 in revenue. Their payments to the new loan would be somewhere in the vicinity of 55,000 for that year. So then there would be a difference of 120,000 or so that would be over. The next year it dropped down to 30% and then of course, that number would continue to zero like we just discussed, so.
I would, I guess, I'd just like to have all of the occupation tax that they receive go towards this loan.
Well, the point at which we, we bring that ordinance back, which will probably be in the, I don't know, we're not sure exactly, probably be in the March timeframe. That's probably rough, roughly when this will all get resolved, so. That's, we think that's when the vote will come, so. Mark, I'm sorry, Don, did you have anything else I didn't mean to?
Well, no, that's okay. I just, um, yeah. It seems to me that there hasn't always been really good stewards of taxpayers' money going to the Golden Spike. This all started before I moved here and of course, I was appalled to see that we went so far in debt and raised taxes to buy a tourist attraction. But that's just me.
Where are we gonna get the money?
What's that?
Where are we getting the money to loan them?
We, the city, we, we have two or three different sources and Lane and Don are working on what, what's the most logical source for it. So could be contingency funds, could be excess. I'm sorry, could be contingency funds, could be excess sales tax from this year. We're just looking to see what the, what the most responsible source is right now, so.
Won't come out of the, the surplus fund.
No, that's why I said contingency, so.
The only thing that worries me is I've never seen a council that voted against a tourism request, so. I, I wasn't gonna vote for this, but after hearing it all, I will because at least for a while, we'll be taking a burden off the taxpayer, which is what I feel I was put here to do. And I, I appreciate all the work that went into this plan. It's a good plan. Like I said, I just have that one fear that it'll just creep back up. And of course, I guess I'll be standing at that podium complaining if that does come before the council. So. But, okay.
Other, oh, Ty?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. First, first of all, I, I, I like this plan because we're four years away from something having to happen with it. And there, I know that the admittance numbers aren't as large as the original consultants projected, but they're still significant. I don't remember if it's 30,000 a year, 40,000 a year, but it's a big number, so it, it is a community asset, but they, you know, Iron Eagle was such a divisive issue in the city that I'd never want to see anything like that, that here again. And so very supportive of the plan. There's some, some math that I think is important in this is that if you, if you start at that, wherever this ends up, but if roughly two-thirds of that tax comes back to the city and one-third goes to them and then it weans down from there. If you take, look at the money outlay that's gonna go out today, that redirection of funds back to us is about the same, or it's in the same realm of dollars. And so if I'm thinking of protecting the taxpayers' interests, which we, I am, it's part of our responsibility, is that we're putting this money out, but unless the lodging tax backs up, which I don't think is gonna happen, maybe there's small volatility, but it shouldn't, I don't think a decline, material decline significant, then the recoup of that under that timeframe to 2029 happens. So we're fronting this money, but we're gonna be able to, to grab the difference. And I think that's really important because if we couldn't recoup that, then we'd be putting more taxpayers' money at risk. The other thing that I also think's important is, I know where I work and where all of you guys work, we, we get approached all the time about donations and sponsorships. Well, I've never been very excited about sponsorships to an organization that has the control of the, this occupation tax. And I, I believe in their effort, but as we wean them off this, I think we're gonna help their ability to raise money. I look at like the way that our historical society museum operates, very commendable manner. And I appreciate that the USDA helped the communities, the voters meet its wishes. They finance it out of the gate because nobody else would, and that's what they do. But it's time to solve this. And, and I think this is a, is a good plan because I think if we can help support the Spike and the board to operating like a traditional nonprofit, then they have an opportunity to continue to be a, a public asset. So I appreciate the effort on this. I really do.
Ed?
I'm sure this is covered in the contract, but what happens if for some reason they are not able to make the payments?
I'll let Bill chime in here too, but it's, it, it would, the agreement between the Spike and the city, assuming we'll, we are able to reach one, will mirror a bank loan. And so it would be just as though an asset of, if you didn't pay for your car, the bank would come and get your car. And then the city will sell it.
So I can, I can speak to that too. So we don't, we don't have anything inked out yet, so there's, there's nothing in place. So this is just conceptual. But the mayor's correct in, in how we perceive that it would look. It would be very similar to the city acting as a bank where we would have a deed of trust against the property. Because as Councilman Lucas stated, uh, you know, one of the things that we have to be concerned with uh, on the city level is that we need to protect all of these taxpayer funds that have gone towards the spike over the years. In any, any of the future funds that would go to them as well. So as I see it, from where I sit in this seat, we don't have any choice but to do that in order to protect the city's interests. And so, yes, if, under those circumstances, if the loan was defaulted on, it wasn't paid, then, then at that time, the city could go through the notice of default procedures and potentially take over ownership or simply just have a trustee's sale and sell it to the highest bidder. So it, it doesn't necessarily result in the city ending up as the owner of the property, but it protects the city's interests, uh, so far as the funds that have gone towards the project are concerned.
I'd much rather you repossess my car than the Spike.
Well.
I, I don't think the city's gonna be, at least with me as city as attorney, we're not gonna make a loan to you for your car though, Ed.
But just, just one, one second, Mark. Part of the logic behind making, turning a loan around, extending it for 20 years and making the payment $4,500 is something that's very achievable for an operation like that. So the chances of something like that occurring, I mean, quite honestly, if that happens, I think we're gonna have much bigger issues in our town. We're gonna be dealing with, and that'll be the least of our concerns, so.
Well, the other thing is we're dealing with inflated dollars. The, the loan amount is fixed.
That's true. All right, Mark, go ahead.
Okay. Well, I'm making the assumption that they have enough money with how they run that they could afford a $4,500 loan. Am I correct? And I mean, I have no idea how much they bring in every month profit-wise, so.
Brad, you're on the board. What are your thoughts on that?
I think $4,500 a month is a very doable and achievable thing. One of the things that I really like about this still is it gives the Spike a soft landing and gives them time to start to sharpen their pencils and really take a good, hard look at this and, and to operate in a way that they haven't in the past, so. It's good for the city and it's good for the Spike, in my opinion.
I don't want to see any more tax money go to it. Obviously, I was against it when, when it was originally proposed, but I don't want to see them just fail either. I mean, it would be nice if they could find a way to go on and, and support themselves.
And I think it's doable, but they need that time to, to grow and to change and adjust. We will.
Depends on how they spend their money, just like any other operation.
Absolutely.
And, and, and to be blunt, that's one of the complexities of, of developing this plan. It was, was trying to achieve all of these things without putting any one of them to risk.
Yeah. Mayor Keller, I think Ty alluded to the problem I've had with this is that his, his tax revenues and under this arrangement with the Department of Agriculture, we really lost control over it. By doing this, the city council will get control of these funds, which is where it should be. Because we're the ones that have the taxing authority, so that's why I'm in favor of this, is get, get it away from the Department of Agriculture. Get the thing under our control 100%. I think we can do better with it that way.
Donna?
Just have one question. Do they have a website that tells who the board members are?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, I'll look for it. Thank you.
And just to sum up real quick, I really, really appreciate the forward thinking and the foresight in this of this. You know, we had till 2029 to do something and then it's like a hammer right there for the Spike and for the city. You know, the Spike is really not something you want to lose, cause as Councilman Lucas said, you know, 30,000 people or so come to North Platte and participate in, in the attractions out there. You know, so I, I commend you guys, the city administration and the councilmen and women who worked on this. You know, cause we could have just tucked our head and let 2029 come around and we had no plan. But now this is a logical, forward-thinking plan that really, as, as Brad said, you know, gives the Spike a soft landing and really figure out where they can sharpen their pencils and, and gives them the best ability to succeed. So I commend all you guys for doing this. Nice work.
All right, thank you. Bruce Mendenhall is here. He's a member of the Spike Board. Bruce, do you have anything you'd like to add? Nope, you're quiet. Let the record show, Bruce does not want to say anything. Okay, any other comments or questions on item number two? Calling the question on item number two, please. Oh, give Angie a second to get the screen back, please.
I have another question.
Okay, calling the question on item number two, please. Item number two is passed. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to item number three, authorize and approve the contract extension request for Ryan Coolman for hauling and disposal of yard and tree waste from the city transfer station and authorize the mayor to sign all documents for the city.
Move to authorize and approve the contract extension request from Ryan Coolman for hauling and disposal of yard and tree waste from the city transfer station and authorize the mayor to sign and all documents for the city.
Second.
Motion by Garrick, second by Rieker. Have any discussion on item number three? Seeing done, calling the question on item number three, please. Item number three is passed. Item number four, approve the purchase of a 40 by 60 polygon. Is that the correct pronunciation, polygon? Okay, thank you. Park shelter and related materials to install in Cody Park using newborn funds in the amount of $264,587.
I move to approve the purchase of a 40-foot by 60-foot polygon park shelter and related materials to install in Cody Park using newborn funds in the amount of $264,587.
Second.
Motion by Garrick, second by Flanders. You want to talk about those? You have a while to talk about.
Well, you want to kind of come up and explain what you're proposing? I guess I would just, um, if the question will come up as far as the newborn funds, the latest, um, report we got just last month on newborn funds is it's, it's sitting at about 3.6 million total fund. About 2.7 million of that is what the basic, the starting amount was, that we tried not to go below. So it leaves about 900,000 approximately in the fund for, for use for children and park-related activities is how that was spelled out.
Mayor and members of council, I'm Lyle Minjel, Park and Recreation Director. Now, the mayor alluded a little bit ago that, uh, we've got new pickleball courts, new tennis courts coming in where we already have softball, we have disc golf, we have a train museum, we have horseshoes. You know, all in that area where this is proposed. And so, um, I did some numbers and we have like 21, I'm sorry, 22 Saturdays and 21 Sundays in the, between the months of May to, to September, which is 41 days. The Cody Shelter was rented and reserved for 40 of them days throughout the whole summer, so. So right now, we see that it's already, already being utilized quite, quite, quite extensively. Now bringing in the new courts, then we're gonna be bringing in a new water park. We're gonna be busting at the seams in, in Cody Park and we're gonna need something for families to go and gather so that they can enjoy the other amenities in there. So, but, um, we, uh, the revenue we bring in, you know, is, is probably about right about $5,000 a year on that, on all three of the shelters. And, uh, and that covers, you know, the cleaning, clean, you know, covers all the utilities, water, electricity. And then, um, and then as you see in the proposal there too, we received a $4,700 grant from the municipal, or not the municipal, Mid-Nebraska Community Foundation, so. Any other questions?
Well, I believe, where are you thinking about putting this? Back by the, by the horseshoe pits?
That is correct. We have an area back there where, you know, the playground existed. So we've got some concrete sidewalk there and we also have a chain link fence there already too. So we kind of have some protection for someone, you know, not to wander off into the pond. So I know that was kind of a concern, you know, from last time. So I know that was kind of a concern, you know, from, from last time.
Lyle, do you anticipate this having like picnic benches and stuff underneath of it, or what, what, what's gonna be?
Big picnic tables? Oh, absolutely.
I'm sorry, picnic table.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, sir, we'll have, we'll have them under there just like we do the rest of them.
Okay.
Uh, you know, we'll make it accommodate, you know, weddings and graduation receptions, you know, and all that kinda stuff.
You think the colors will keep the peacocks away?
The colors?
That's what the fence is for.
Thank you, Lyle.
You're welcome.
So will, it'll be on concrete?
Yes.
Will it be polished so you could have a dance?
Oh.
Well, during COVID, we use that one at the park all the time.
Well, we have to be kinda careful there. If we get too polished, you know, good old Nebraska weather, we might, you know, have a little bit of ice or a little bit of frost on it too, and we might, might create a safety concern.
Stick to the shredded rubber then.
That's right.
Thank you.
This, we looked at this a couple of years ago, right?
That's correct.
Very similar project.
Uh-huh.
And the, the newborn fund did not have the excess at that point. And so the timing seems really good because the investments have performed so well over the last couple of years. So I think the timing to move forward with this is really good now, in my opinion. My question is, is, is with this and anything else we think maybe coming at us on the newborn fund, will our, will we work with our financial advisors to come back and rebalance the fund in the way it's invested then? Is that how that normally works?
I've been in contact with them anyway, just because where the fund balance is at as far as what's in our cash position or what's some, somewhat more liquid, if you will, for some other projects as well. And also just looking at rebalancing the fund to make sure we're doing the right thing with it to protect our current assets, but also help them to continue to grow. I believe Ty, the last time this came before the council, you know, our balance above the principal, if you will, was like in the three-hundred-thousand-dollar range. We've about tripled that amount since then. So we've gone from three-hundred thousand to about nine-hundred thousand in there.
Yeah, the construction costs, as I recall, these might be a shade higher, but the investment pool is in such a better position. It seems like the timing's really good to move forward with this, in my opinion. They look like it was good to be patient. Then I think we just gotta make sure that we get it rebalanced in a way where, where, where it's managed properly, which, but I know you guys are all on top of that. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
All right, no, I, I see that the installation isn't included. Is that something that the city's gonna be doing? Or is, is the company gonna be installing this?
The city will do that.
The city will build this.
Yeah, we, we've put up the other ones ourselves, so I think we've got some experience there now.
I guess I could, one thing, Lyle, that he, he mentioned the other, um, shelters that we have, that we, we have one that we rent in Memorial and one also in Centennial that we, we actually booked. Some of the other ones, you know, you don't have to book, you can just, and, and the ones that we do have that we book, if they're not being used, somebody can use them. But those to also the Memorial Park and Centennial Park that use quite extensively in those same time period as well.
Right, yeah. Cody Park was, was probably fifty percent or more of all the rentals. And so between the other two was the fifty percent on the other one, so.
Thank you, Lyle. Okay, calling the question on item number four, please. Item number four is passed. Item number five, first reading in action to adopt ordinance number four-one-eight-seven to add sections one-ten-zero-three through one-ten-zero-nine to Title XI Business Regulations, Chapter one-ten General Provisions to the Code of the City of North Platte relating to occupation taxes. Lay in the ordinance, please.
Ordinance number forty-one-eight-seven, an ordinance of the City of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, to amend Title XI Business Regulations, Chapter one-ten General Provisions, Section one-ten oh-three of the Code of the City of North Platte by adding and revising Sections one-ten oh-three through one-ten oh-nine relating to occupation taxes to provide that this ordinance shall be made a part of the Code of the City of North Platte, Nebraska, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing for the effective date and publication thereof.
Thank you.
Move to adopt ordinance number four-one-eight-seven to add Section one-ten dot zero-three through one-ten dot zero-nine to Title XI Business Regulations, Chapter one-ten General Provisions to the Code of the City of North Platte relating to occupation taxes.
Second.
Motion by Garrick, second by Vols. Okay, uh, this is the ordinance cleanup we were talking about earlier. I asked Bill to just mention a few words about it before we take questions, so Bill, would you?
Yes, so, uh, a, as the mayor showed in his previous slides, the current version of Section one-ten-point-oh-three is, is very lanky. For some recent meetings, I had printed it off from the online version of the city code, and it consists of about six pages of an eight-and-a-half, eight, eight-and-a-half-by-eleven sheet of paper. So, uh, there, there's a lot contained within that one section, and it can make it a little bit harder to look for, especially for the public when they're getting online and looking for code sections. So the idea behind this is we're basically taking some of the sentences and breaking them out into separate sections so that it'll be a lot easier for everyone that wants to reference these provisions to find what it is that they're looking for. So, um, so that, that's the intent behind what we're doing here.
Comments or questions? Seeing none, calling the question on item number five, please. Item number five is passed. Item number six, first reading in action to adopt ordinance number four-one-eight-eight to add Sections one-ten dot ten through one-ten dot twenty to Title XI Business Regulations, Chapter one-ten General Provisions to the Code of the City of North Platte relating to lodging facility occupation taxes. Lay in the ordinance, please.
Ordinance number forty-one-eight-eight, an ordinance of the City of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, to amend the Code of the City of North Platte by adding Sections one-ten-ten through one-ten-twenty to Title XI Business Regulations, Chapter one-ten General Provisions to provide that this ordinance shall be made a part of the Code of the City of North Platte, Nebraska, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing for the effective date and publication thereof.
Thank you.
I move to adopt ordinance number four-one-eight-eight to add Sections one-ten dot ten through one-ten dot twenty to Title XI Business Regulations, Chapter one-ten General Provisions to the Code of the City of North Platte relating to lodging facility occupation taxes.
Second.
Motion by Garrick, second by Vols. This item is somewhat similar in that it's also a cleanup effort, but I'm gonna ask Bill to talk about some of the items in there.
Do you want me to pull up the existing code? If we have, do you switch it over? I can pull it up online.
Okay, go ahead. Angie, would you switch this monitor? A brief pause while we manage the technology.
I may not know what I'm getting myself into here. I'm not to age myself, but I don't have the bifocals like our mayor does.
I'm gonna need binoculars if that gets, gets too much smaller. That's one-ten oh-three right there.
Okay, so, um, as we had discussed on the previous item before council, this is a similar provision that, um, we're trying to take some of the, uh, content out of this Section one-ten-point-oh-three specifically, uh, the items dealing with the lodging taxes. So, um, in the prior proposed ordinance, we were dealing with this Section A that you can kinda see on the screen in front of you. So this was what we were breaking into some of those different sections that the council just acted on. Um, we're also, uh, we also included in that last ordinance, uh, Section B and Section C. So in this particular ordinance, we're, uh, trying to clarify a bit more uh, what falls within this Section D here that's on the screen in front of you. Um, and so it talks about the occupation tax on hotel accommodations. Um, and then it goes into a couple definitions of hotel and occupied room. And so there's, there's not a whole lot of context there, uh, so far as that occupation tax goes. The next part just talks about collection of taxes, and then we have, uh, Part Four here that talks about records. So we have very, very little in our city code that deals with the collection of the, what we call now the hotel occupation tax. So, uh, the purpose of ordinance number four-one-eight-eight that is before the, uh, city council right now is to help to clarify what the city does with this hotel occupation tax. And so one of, one of the ways that I'm trying to accomplish that, if you look at, uh, Section D one here with the definition of a hotel, really, it's, it's talk, talking about, um, anywhere where you can obtain accommodations in a space used for sleeping. And so hotel is not the best definition. So one of the things I've done here in this proposed ordinance is I've changed that. Uh, instead of referring to all of it as a hotel occupation tax, I've changed it to a lodging facility. Uh, because it better encompasses even what our current city code provides for. Um, so that's one detail. And then as you look through what is proposed here, uh, so we have additional definitions here. Once we get to Section one-ten fourteen, we get into, uh, the collection of the occupation tax. Which you can see is very similar to this Section D three that's in the existing code. We talk about the due date, um, because it, it helps to clarify what is not as clear in our cer, current city code. And then we talk about, um, Section one-ten-point-sixteen in the current proposed ordinance talks about a return. The way that, uh, this occupation tax currently works is that each facility that collects the tax just kinda reports it however they want to. So we see things that are just kinda all over the board. So what we're trying to do here is to make it a little bit easier for city staff to administer this with the returns that are coming in. So we're gonna require, if this were to pass, we would require kind of a standardized form that everybody uses, rather than everybody coming up with their own forms and turning it in. So again, it makes it just a little bit easier for city staff to manage. So some of what's being proposed under this ordinance is to help the city in administering, uh, this occupation tax and in making sure that things happen. Um, so that's what you see then, especially in Section one-ten-point-eighteen. It goes into greater detail and better detail to talk about what happens if the occupation tax is not paid. And, uh, then Section one-ten-point-nineteen provides, again, more detail, kinda more guidance for the city and better clarity for those paying the occupation tax about how it's to be administered. And that's most of it. So some of this is expanding upon what is currently in the city code. Uh, but that's because from my perspective, we don't have quite enough in the city code right now to help us with enforcing the collection of the occupation tax and also just administering the collection of it. So, um, what I've come up with here, I've borrowed a lot from other cities that have the same type of occupation tax. Uh, so I'm not really kind of recreating the wheel. I'm borrowing from what other communities are already doing. Um, and in my mind, that helps because we do have hotel oper, operators that operate in other cities. So it makes it a little bit more uniform for them, uh, if we borrow a little bit from what other cities are doing with this process. So that.
That's great. Thank you. Questions or comments?
Good question.
Lucas?
Sir, is there state statute pertaining to what this particular tax can be used for? Or is that a hundred percent under local control?
So that's, that's under local control, and it, it, there is a state statute that pertains to occupation taxes and when a city can collect them, how, how that is to be allowed. So, um, again, this gets a little bit back into our discussion about the golden spike where, when this was originally presented to the city, it was passed by the voter and allowed to be collected for the reasons that are specified in, in what we talked about earlier tonight. But the administration of it and the enforcement of it isn't necessarily all set out in, in state statute. So it, it allows us a little more, um, flexibility, I guess. And that's, that's where I'm trying to add to what we have now to make it easier to administer. That, that's the main, I guess, purpose behind it, in my mind, so.
Ed?
Mr. Mayor, I, I, I think this is wise. Uh, it will clear up some of the, uh, confusion and maybe, uh, inability of the city to collect some taxes that we really rightfully thought were due.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Garrick?
Bill, just, just to clarify, this expands the scope a little bit on the local level, uh, to include like Airbnb, Verbo, things of that nature, correct?
Those, those are specifically spelled out in the definition under, um, what you see here. Under sec, what I, what is proposed is Section one-ten-point-eleven as a lodging facility. Um, so like I pointed out with the existing code, um, there could be a bit of an argument that it's, that's a sleeping accommodation. So, you know, I think there's an argument to be made that those are already potentially included under the current version of the code. This just probably clarifies it a little bit more for, for those that may have an Airbnb or a VRBO.
Yep, and, and I agree with you. I, I, I could see the argument being made, and this just clarifies it and makes it simpler. What, what I'm hopeful could happen is, I, I believe, uh, how that's working now, I, I own a couple Airbnb's, so I, I, I kinda understand this process a little bit. Uh, the state is already charging, uh, through the, the website for this, but it gets, it gets tacked on the front end. So I'm hopeful we can contact either Verbo and Airbnb and get that added onto the front end. So then it just, it just a pass-through and the money comes directly from the, the website. Um, I'm hopeful we can get that accomplished. The, the difficulty is, how do you, how do you tell them which, which, what is our city limits? So, um, but if we can accomplish that, then it makes the, the reporting on the backend for owners like, owners, operators like myself much simpler, and it just, it just becomes seamless at that point. And we'll get much more of the revenue, um, so I'm hopeful we can get that accomplished.
We will certainly reach out to them. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, calling the question on item number six, please. Item number six is passed. Item number seven is pulled from the agenda because there's a little bit more work to do on it. Item number eight, approve the resolution providing for the designation of Dayspring Bank as a warrant lender authorizing the execution and delivery of a warrant purchase agreement with such designated warrant lender and referring to and incorporating the terms and conditions of ordinance number three-eight-seven-four relating to warrant financing.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the resolution providing for the designation of Dayspring Bank as a warrant lender authorizing the execution, delivery of a warrant purchase agreement with such designated warrant lender and referring to and incorporating the terms and conditions of ordinance number eight, excuse me, number three-eight-seven-four relating to warrant financing. Second.
Motion by Rieker, second by Nisley. Any discussion on item number eight? Seeing none, calling the question on item number eight, please. Thank you. Item number eight is passed. Item number nine, adopt the resolution approving claims and authorizing the issuance of one warrant to Myers Construction, Inc. in the amount of six-hundred-eighty-one thousand, eight-hundred-fifty-two dollars and forty-one cents, and one warrant to Municipal Light and Water in the amount of twelve thousand, four-hundred-eight dollars and forty cents to pay approved claims referring to and incorporating the terms and conditions. to pay approved claims referring to and incorporating the terms and conditions of ordinance number 3874 relating to warrant financing.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of two warrants as presented in the materials. Second.
Motion by Rieker, second by Vols. Any discussion on item number nine?
Mr. Mayor, it doesn't specifically have to do with this, I guess, but how are they coming on that ninth seed project? I see they still don't have everything filled in and they're still pumping water in the storms they were in.
They're much closer.
They've made a lot of progress recently. They've got most of those holes, almost the connections done and filled in. Still got the street I use all the time closed, but.
I can't give you an exact date, but it should be in the next few weeks when they're finished. So yeah, where are the weather changing and everything else? So the only things are starting to move a little faster than they had for a while.
Good. Okay, thank you. That was my question.
Other questions or comments on number nine? Seeing none, calling the question on item number nine. Item number nine is passed. Item number 10, approve the claims.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the claims. Second.
Motion by Rieker, second by Vols. Calling the question and approving the claims. Claims are approved. Public agenda request. We respect our city employees and request that any complaints or criticisms of employees not be aired in a public meeting. Concerns about employees should be brought to the attention of the mayor, the city administrator, individuals in violation will be declared out of order. Disproportionate meeting. If anyone has a public agenda request, please approach the mic and we will listen to your request. Mr. Rieker?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn. Second.
Motion by Rieker, second by Vols. Calling the question and adjournments. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving. We'll see you all on December 3rd. Brad took your place.
Brad took.
Yeah, yeah.